Call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Shinholster?
Here.
Mr. Mullins?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Dr. Lee?
Thank you. We do have a quorum present. Welcome everybody to our meeting this evening, and ask that you would stand for the prayer and pledge, please. The last prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the state that you provided for us. We thank you for the opportunity to gather here with our community, and we ask that you would lead and guide this body and the business that we will take up for our community. We ask that you would lead us and guide us in the direction that you would have us go according to your will. Lord, we always ask that you be with our state and national leaders, as they do the same. And given the state of our world today, we ask that you be with all of those who serve this country, both here and abroad, and particularly those who are in harm's way, and that you would protect them and bring them back to us safely again. We thank you for all that you do and all that you are. We ask these things in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, I'll entertain a motion for the adoption of the September 23rd, council meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion, any additions, deletions, or corrections. Hearing and ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
That passes. Thank you. We'll move on to old business. Counsel, we will consider ordinance 013, which is a public hearing for rezoning. And ladies and gentlemen, if you will indulge me just a moment, I would like to tell you exactly how we're going to structure this. Once it's been determined that the hearing has been properly advertised, I'll ask the clerk to read the proposed amendment. We will then hear the decision, planning, and zoning. I'll then recognize any person or persons who would like to speak on behalf of the amendment, and I will hear from any person or persons who would like to speak in opposition. If there is opposition, you will be given an opportunity for rebuttal. And while I will recognize any person or persons who would like to testify, I ask that you would first approach the podium and give your name and address for the record. And as you are encouraged to speak, I would ask that you remember that time is of the essence, and I will request that you keep your comments as brief as possible, and certainly germane to the subject. First hearing is to consider ordinance 013, to amend the land development code to rezone 311 and 350 East McIntosh Street, and 221 North Albert Street, from SFR2 to MR2. And I would ask the clerk, as the public hearing been correctly posted and advertised.
Yes, sir, it has been.
I would like for you to read the ordinance by caption, please.
This is to conduct the public hearing of a north-southern land development code to rezon approximately 2.3 acres from SFR2 to MR2. Properties are located at 311 and 350 East McIntosh Street and 221 North Albert Street. Properties are currently owned by Chester Algumby and will be combined and sold in order to develop townhomes. There will be three buildings with 10 apartments in each building, a total of approximately 90 bedrooms.
Would you present the advisory decision of planning, Antonio, please, sir?
Yes, sir. It was recommended for approval.
Was it unanimous?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any one like to speak in favor?
If you'd like to go ahead and make our presentation.
Yes, sir, please. This would be the time to do it.
What you have in your hand, and apparently we don't have an overhead tonight, but what you have in your hand is a development package that shows a picture of, several pictures, but the ones that are really dynamic are the ones that shows how unkept and really bad-looking property. There's been houses that have basically rotted down over the years. And what we want to do is go in and completely revitalize that block and that neighborhood, and build anywhere from, well, it's 30 apartments on it. And the apartments will be student-oriented, of course, and they can range from anywhere from 90 to 120 beds is what we're looking at. And as you can see, it's really high-end construction with brick and, of course, all the proper paving and everything. And what is so dynamic about this property is, even though right now it's an eyesore, it's 850 feet to downtown, basically from this property. It's also 850 feet from the university. And it will just, our goal is to try to get as many students to live there without cars as possible, even though we've got plenty of parking. But we still think this is so close to both the downtown area and the campus that it would be a very, very popular place for students. One of the things that has been kind of a misnomer in several meetings that I've been in lately around Milledgeville is that a lot of people think that because of the amount of apartments here, that the apartment vacancy rates are greater than they really are. And I brought with me tonight a student housing expert who studies these things on a daily basis. And what I do, I'd like to ask Kyle Taylor to come up and give you all a report on what the market is for student housing in Milledgeville.
Can I ask you a question, Josh?
Yes.
On here, you said there was plenty of parking, and you say 90 bedrooms, right?
Yes, 90 to 120.
90 to 120. On this drawing right here, it says 79 parking spaces, right there. Is that, is this the way this is going to be built?
Yes, yes. And that is well within the boundary of 30 apartments.
How is it well within the boundaries now? Explain that to me, because 90 bedrooms, most every one of them is going to have a car. How, how do you figure that?
The, well, the city, that's where the city ordinance is read, as far as the amount of parking spaces is there. And I think that...
Marvin?
So it's 30 units. It's only 30 units. No, it's well within.
Gary, I apologize. Could you give your name and address for the record?
I've been here so much.
And I think that's why I went by the two.
Okay, my name is Gary Spillers. I'm at 146 Wildwood Lane, Milledgeville, Georgia, 31061.
Thank you. Kyle, I need you to do the same, please.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Kyle Taylor, and my address is 2626 Peachtree Road, Northeast, Unit 1408, Atlanta, Georgia. So I work with a national real estate firm in Atlanta. All I focus on is student housing properties. Only focus on the southeast, and this is one of the markets that I track. I've been tracking this university for about 14 to 15 months now. Done a local survey and also called around to the university. They have some growth plans. You know, the university's enrollment right now is around 5,600 students. They're looking to increase to about 8,000 students in the next few years. That's their 10-year growth plan. Done a market survey, called all the local apartments and student housing. Everything is 99.5% leased up, entire market right now. And they've actually seen an increase in the rents per bed by about 4% from last year. So very strong market. With this location, I definitely think it's a highly desirable area, and personally think the project would do very well here. So, any questions? Very brief, but...
Counsel.
Okay.
Question.
Yep.
You look at all over the southeast, is that what you...
Yes, sir. All over the southeast.
Different universities, colleges, different sides, and so on.
Tier, tier one, tier three, we break them down, and this is one of the universities. I deal with a lot, and this is a very, very strong university as far as student housing goes.
I do have one question for you. I heard you say that the university plans to increase their enrollment?
Mm-hmm.
That's my first time hearing that.
Yeah, it's, I've actually, I called the university, and they actually have a 10-year growth plan on their website that'll show you everything that's going on. You know, like I said, they're 5,600 right now. The 8,000 doesn't, it's all not going to be in Milledgeville, but the majority is. I mean, some of them's going to be in some of their other locations. But with that being said, it's still, you know, there are plans to grow here. They have the west campus.
Yeah, I was just about to say, because I get there alone on news, and it talks about growth, but it doesn't talk about this campus growing. It talks about the other campuses growing. So that's kind of shifting the...
Yeah, and per their, per the website, you know.
A little bit. Because it's not, it's not going to be here, sir. And then, does that include this campus housing?
Yes.
That's provided, your survey?
Yes. Yeah. I mean, per, per their study, and like I said, you can get it online, they say that they're going to be 643 beds short. And I wouldn't, you know, I don't think they have off-campus at the, off-campus housing at the other locations. So, you know, west campus and down main campus is two different things. Main campus is completely full. West campus, they could, I don't focus on the west campus as much as the downtown locations. So...
So your feedback's coming from here and down?
Yeah, that's, that's coming from the website, personally calling everyone. Like I said, I catalog once every quarter, usually, everyone, so.
Any other questions, Count? I think so.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in favor? Anyone like to speak in opposition? Since there's no opposition, it would be redundant for rebuttal. Council members, any questions or comments at this point? Concludes the...
Got, one question.
Yes, sir.
And that, Gary, if you wouldn't mind if you would explain exactly how the buildings are going to sit. Are they all going to face McIntosh, or is it...
No, one, two will face McIntosh, one will face...
Face Albert?
Albert.
Okay. All right, should it be kind of a L-type of the buildings themselves? And, okay.
Any other questions or statements, counsel? That concludes the presentation of evidence, and I'll ask for a motion on ordinance, please.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing and ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
That passes. Thank you. Second hearing is to consider ordinance 014. Ladies and gentlemen, our structure to how we conduct these meetings is still in place, and I would ask the clerk if the hearing has been correctly posted and advertised.
Yes, sir, it has been.
And if you would, read the ordinance by caption, please.
This is to conduct a public hearing of a north-southern land development code to rezon approximately 3.2 acres from OI Office Institutional to MR2. Property is located at 637 West Thomas Street, Ballin County, Tax Mount, M58, parcel 28. This property is currently owned by Heather Langston and Barbara Ryan, and will be sold in order to develop two buildings with a total of 10 units, or a total of approximately 40 bedrooms.
Has the public hearing been correctly posted and advertised?
Yes, sir, it has been.
And the advisory decision to plan the zoning was?
It was unanimous. Yes, sir, it was unanimous, recommended for approval.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone like to speak in favor?
My name is Randy Daniel. I'm from 1180 Glen Eagle, Greensboro, Georgia. I have two drawings, so I'll speak in favor of it. One is a actual site plan that shows the parking spaces. I assumed y'all had copies. I didn't bring enough copies, but I got some smaller copies as well. Anyway, it shows the site plan, which shows the buildings, the two sets of five, the parking spaces, which is 60 parking spaces. And we have adequate room for fire and emergency in and out, dumpster, trash delivery in and out, and feel like we have adequate parking. We feel like there's a need for the development. It is within walking distance of downtown, and we feel like the structure would, if y'all need to, I got copies that y'all pass around. And then, this is just one of the five bedroom, five units with four bedrooms in each unit. There'll be two sections of buildings like this one here. And be glad to give you some of these smaller copies. I just didn't have enough. I just assumed.
Yeah, they're not colored. All right, well, they're in there. And we spent a good while looking for property
that was, they gave us the buffers that we needed against residential. We feel like it's in a likeness to what other properties around it, and we just feel like it's going to be good for the area and a good complement to the area. But I'd be glad to take any questions, and thank you for your time.
Counsel.
Yes, ma'am. The back of the building will go back up against the doctor's office, and the front doors will face the railroad tracks.
Is there any kind of wall or anything going to be built up there to keep, because that's like a 50-foot, at least a 50-foot drop-off?
Yes, ma'am.
Down for that train. What kind of wall are you going to put there?
Well, we foresee, we haven't got our final grading plan, but we foresee a concrete wall that will be more of a retaining wall, and then on top of that wall will be a fence on top of that wall.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. And we'll be governed by certain guidelines that we have to have, certain safety, you know, for people that may fall or have a chance to fall. But yeah, there would be a fence across the top of that wall.
You might need to get an insurance agent for that, ain't ya?
I may need one.
Can you say, you know, in and out, is it going to be another way that they can get out?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. The only entrance and exit will be on Thomas Street.
Okay, where the double driveway is.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is there no runway for individuals to go around though?
Well, the way, on that site plan...
Right here.
I'll just bring it over if you don't mind.
With your inner entrance right here, and then when you come in, cars can go, and we have a loop around where they can come in and get back out.
So there's nothing in the back?
No, ma'am. As a matter of fact, we're only developing about acre and a half of the free acres. It's a lot of green space, because it does fall off at such a rate. But anyway, I'll send you the survey out.
Any other questions, counsel? Anyone else like to speak in favor of the amendment? Anyone like to speak in opposition? Are you speaking in opposition, sir?
John Lansbury resides at 501 North Tatnall Street, which is adjacent to this property.
Yes, sir.
I would like to be able to see the plan, and I wondered if we could view it, because I have no idea. I have objection or not?
I'm sorry, what was your name?
Lansbury.
I'm Randy Daniel. Nice to meet you. This is the site plan, and I'll show the bigger version right there. Kind of orient you here. This is Thomas Street.
Right.
Okay. And then when we enter the parking lot, the building's back up to the professional office, doctor's buildings here.
All right.
And then they face back toward the railroad track, which is down here.
Right. How far back is the property?
Uh, this is a 3.2-acre site or so, and we're only developing about one and a half acres.
That's what I wondered.
So all of that is state, state green space. And it's probably 300 or more feet. Oh, yeah, there's right there. Yeah, there it is.
Should we live here?
Yeah, all that will maintain green space. We won't develop that.
And your only exit entrance is on Thomas?
It's on Thomas Street.
Okay. Thank you.
You good, Mr. Dr. Lansbury? Just make sure you're all right with that. Anyone else like to speak in opposition? Since we did have someone in opposition, Mr. Daniel, you do have a right to rebut, if you'd like?
No, I just, I'll show you all as well. This, this site over here shows the whole tract of land. This one is an enlargement of just the site we're developing, parking from. And you can see how much space is left between development and the back of property, which these are residential spaces that are open. A lot of green space. And there's no other through traffic. It's just one entrance in and out. And there's a lot of, lot of buffer space that's left, which will stay that way.
That's good. I'm just trying to hear from that side of the wall.
Thank you. Any other rebuttal in opposition? Yes, yes, ma'am.
Uh, pushing that in and out. Hey, what you saw. Are you okay with what you saw?
Yes. Anything else in opposition? Counsel, any statements or questions? That concludes the evidence on this hearing, and I would ask counsel for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing and ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
That passes. Thank you. Counsel, ask the clerk to read in caption ordinance 018, please.
This is an ordinance to adopt an ordinance amending the retirement plan and trust to comply with IRS Notice 2014-19. The IRS announced a notice 2014-19 that all qualified retirement plans must have language that is consistent with the Windsor decision in order to maintain tax-qualified status. Tax qualification status is extremely important for retirement plans because of its rule for qualifications. If, if all the rules for qualification, not qualified, IRS could impose large penalties on the employer or immediate taxation of the participants for the value of their accrued pension benefits not yet received.
Counsel, that is a second read on that ordinance, and I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we adopt.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing and ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
That passes. Thank you. Next, ask the clerk to read in caption ordinance 019, please.
An ordinance to levy and assess taxes for the support of the mayor and all of the city and manager with the tax year 2014, and to provide for the collection of sign.
Counsel, that is a second read on that ordinance, and I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing and ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes. We move to new business. Council members, we have an appeal from David Simmons to a Historic Preservation Commission decision to deny a sign placed on a building located at 128 North Wayne Street. The way that we will structure this is that I'll first recognize Mr. Simmons for his comments, then we will hear from the chair of the Historic Preservation Commission to explain to us why the application was denied. I'll then give each speaker an opportunity for rebuttal, and then each council member will be given an opportunity to ask questions or to make comments. I encourage you to speak, but again, in essence of time, I'm asking you to keep your comments to the point, brief as possible, and certainly germane to the subject. Mr. Simmons, I would recognize you at this time, and if you would, again, state your name and address for the record.
I'm David Simmons. I live at 120 East Hall Street, Milledgeville, Georgia. I'm the mayor and the city council. I'm here because I don't agree with the determination of the Historic Preservation Commission to not make my, grant my sign as appropriate. I feel as though it is appropriate, and so that is why I'm here. Y'all have a picture of the sign?
No, sir, we probably need to be... I'd like to see yours, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Are there any questions?
Counsel?
My sign is on page four. There are a number of other signs in the historic district that are more noticeable than mine. My sign is on the back of the building, and there are a number of other signs in the historic district that are larger than mine, and you're seeing some of them there. I have the pages numbered, because I don't really want to call out the name of the businesses, just the page numbers. So we feel as though our sign is appropriate.
Any questions for Mr. Simmons, counsel?
What were the reasons stated, Mr. Simmons, for denial?
I think you have a letter, I have a letter, and dated September the 15th. I guess it says your sign exceeds maximum size... I guess it says your sign exceeds maximum size thirty-six inches by seventy-two inches, and uh, something else, some other things there. Uh, say that again, please ma'am.
That the recommended sign should be thirty-six by seventy-two, and yours is ninety-six by one twenty.
Uh, well, uh, I don't know how the Historic Preservation came up with that, because I haven't found a guideline that says it should be uh, thirty-six by seventy-two. I uh, have the uh, Secretary of Interior standards for guidelines in historic districts from the federal government, and I also have, which is, uh, you'll see a picture of it on page ten. The uh, page ten, the guidelines for rehabilitation and new construction in the Milliville Historic District. And uh, none of them say that uh, the sign maximum size has to be that, should be uh, should be governed by that, those thirty-six by seventy-two inches.
Do you, do you own that thing?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
What was the reason, what were you told was denied?
Same, same reason you see here on paper, that uh, it was, it was uh, thirty-six, uh, more than thirty-six by seventy-two inches. I'm sorry, thirty-six inches by seventy-two inches.
Any other questions?
Alright. So.
Put it on that question statement, I need to make an identification. I went out and walked yesterday, walked around the town, and I'm finding some signs that are larger. Do you believe this sign that Mr. Simmons is talking about, it has some exception to the rule of what?
Yes, ma'am, what it is, is that's the recommended standard, which of course gets quick approval through Main Street. Anything over that has to go before the HPC Commission, and HPC Commission then um, what was it called? Yes, ma'am.
Let me see, so all signs go for HPC?
Only if they are.
Over size?
Yes.
Does Main Street have it say so over size?
Yes, Main Street.
So you have to go to both board?
No, alright, Main Street can do an automatic approval on anything that's within the guidelines for signs, but if it's not within the guidelines, then it goes before the board.
What board?
HPC.
So does Main Street have a board too?
Yeah, but they don't go, well, she's got like a DDA board, it doesn't have anything to do with that.
They can approve it if it meets the standard.
I know, I know it's not recommended size, but, so anything over Main Street has to refer it back to E.
It will, yes, it goes before.
I'd ask you to use your microphones, please.
So, if, if that's the case, then, and, and it went before HPC, and I, I'm assuming all of these other signs that we're seeing in this package did the same thing, am I correct?
I have no idea what package you're looking at, I can't match that.
Okay. Yeah, because they, though, all of those signs are so much larger than his, so I'm trying to figure out the logic for denying that particular one.
And spoke out, um, President of HPC here, what is, what, what sign is that? Okay, this is his. Alright, the second one right there, we did not know was here until Mr. Simmons presented it to the board, it has now been removed, we've taken a picture, it's gone. This is something that was painted, and it did sort of end up like a sign, but it's no longer there, it's been removed, it was not approved. And so we spoke with him about that. This one, of course, this is the regular, um, rendering redemption, or whatever you call it. You've got a picture of it back here where it was originally on this building. This was an original facade of this building, well, it's historic, so that was just, felt like, it was part of that to mine, so it was, and you've got pictures of it in your chambers, back there, the way it does show the building from back then. This, I'm not sure, I guess this is advertised in the farmer's market, right here, this of course the city did. Can't explain that. Then the next one, the pile print, I don't know, is that still there? Is it, okay, alright. That, of course, is George College, George College does do things without going through HPC. They all, it's exempt, and the other side is the signature.
And those are painted on?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, and they, all those were painted on, none of those are final signs, they're all painted, and that's, every one of those were.
So the signature, are they, what has to be with that?
Well, technically, miss, um, help me, but, am I correct, Ms. Jordan? The city is exempt from, the city is exempt from its regulations. So is the college, the college does not follow, under.
Correct.
The guidelines, but, they are usually courteous and will come to us and let us know what they have. We ran into this with the Barnes and Nobles, they wanted to put a large one like that on the side of the um, theater down there, but they did reduce it to our standards, and I have a picture of that where they did reduce it, where they just followed the guidelines.
Any other questions, Ms. Brown?
The, the paint, yes, ma'am, and I've got a picture of where it was. Like I said, we did not realize it was down there until he presented it to the manager. And so we called him and he didn't leave.
Ms. Farrell? If you would give us your name and address for the record.
I am Yvonne E. Farrell, I live at two thirty-one East Baldwin Street. I serve as Chair of the Milliville Historic Preservation Commission. And the commission routinely make every effort humanly possible not to set a precedence that we are not willing to follow throughout the historic district. If we plan to maintain the historical appearance and certifications that we have been afforded, then we have to maintain those guidelines. We have had any number of requests that have been denied because it did not fall within the Milliville City guidelines. We sent a letter to Mr. Simmons after his appearance before the commission, and explained to him why it was not approved. After several visits to Main Street to get them to sign a certificate, which was rejected. After the sign was erected, he then came before the Historic Preservation. We do not encourage entrepreneurs, personal property owners within the city's historic district to disregard guidelines that have been approved by the city. We ask that the city supports the commission and the guidelines that have been approved. Questions?
Counsel?
Guess what I'm looking at there, we, you know, basically these rules are set forth, of course, with signs mainly in the, in the front facade of buildings and everything, so we now, we talking about a different animal when we talking about the rear of buildings.
It's still within the historic district. I understand the placement of that sign because of the traffic in that parking garage next to City Hall. But, if you set a precedence, then you have to provide every property owner that wants to maintain a lease from another business, the same opportunities.
So if, if a sign came within the recommended
Yes.
size.
That's been fine.
The placement of it, and the content, the vinyl.
Yes, the certificate would have been issued.
Issued, okay.
No, I said a letter after he, he, oh, see the, I don't know if you all had copies of this letter, but in the letter it says, "Your sign exceeds the maximum size of thirty-six by seventy-two. The sign was delivered to you according to his statement in December twenty thirteen, but you failed to apply for a certificate of appropriateness even though you acknowledged that you were aware that the certificate was required. You placed the sign on your building in July twenty fourteen without obtaining a certificate." After, in addition, we were informed that he had made several trips to Main Street to get a certificate after he had been told it could not be approved at that level. The commission serves the city, the mayor, manager, and council. We do not set precedence that cannot be followed throughout. Therefore, we ask for your support of what you have approved us to try and enforce. Any other questions?
Counsel? You're welcome. Thank you. Opposition? Okay.
Uh, John Alton, two two one South Liberty Street. As most of you know, I've been involved in historic preservation, and I served a few years on Historic Preservation Commission. Uh, very familiar, and I do spend a great deal of time in my efforts to preserve the historic value and the architectural value of the downtown historic district, particularly as it deals with both the residential and the business district. I think it's essential to the city, both for the continued growth for businesses downtown, and um, for our tourism trade, which is sometimes forgotten. I'd like to thank the Historic Preservation Commission for their efforts in this particular case because it is uh, an absolute contradiction to the current HPC guidance, which, which the city passed. In addition to the sign being oversized and being disapproved, the sign also is made of shiny plastic, which is absolutely prohibited by the current city guidance. The ones I think that were identified in the material you got are all painted murals, which are absolutely completely different from shiny plastic. Uh, in addition, the manual also says affixing uh, plastic banners, or banners of any nature, affixing them to historic properties, be it front or back or side, is also prohibited. So I would, um, I'd like to agree with our current HPC that this is not in keeping with the current guidance as approved by the city for historic preservation and signage within the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in opposition? Mr. Simmons, you have the right to rebut.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Basically what we're talking about here tonight is a sign on the back of a building in an alley, okay? And, and, and let's be real specific about this. You all are very honorable people, and I know you want to make the right decision. This is real simple. Now, with all due respect to my good friend, Mr. John Alton, there is no guideline that says my sign is to be. All the other signs you've seen there are bigger than my sign, they are bigger than mine. Now, I want you to turn with me, please, to your brochure, and we're gonna see just what is, let's try page eleven. Page eleven, page eleven, I'm sorry. The section at the bottom says rear entrances. In this book here, it says guidelines for rehabilitation and new construction in the Milliville Historic District, done by the Nelligan lady and some others. This is, this is our guideline. In this book, there's only one guideline that direct, that talks about rear signage, and it, and it's this one right here on, on page eleven there that says rear entrances. "The existing of several parking lots at the rear of commercial blocks in downtown, and the potential for the development of additional lots makes the, the development of rear interests, entrances important. Improvements to rear entrances only and need not include any more than, number one, a general cleanup, and the addition of, number two, an awning, or number three, a signage that designates the point of access and identifies the business. Rear entrance access is also an incentive, an incentive for business trade by adding convenience for the potential shopper." And at the bottom it says, "An example of an improved rear entrance." And we all, we've all seen that one happen, I think we've all seen that one. "An example carried out with the addition of an awning and planters and upgrade and existing steps. This rear entrance is reputed by store owners to be used by the majority of the store's customers." That's the only references in our guidelines dealing with rear entrances, dealing with rear entrances. Now, my sign was also called a shiny sign, it is not a shiny sign. It, it, it is a vinyl sign, and most of the signs you see, a lot of them you see around, there's one down on Hancock Street that says rooms for rent, it's, it's vinyl. It's right up against the uh, used to be the Knight Foundation uh, building right there, as you go through the alley. There's a number of vinyl signs. So, my sign is in, in the uh, 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 within guideline. Now, the denial letter puts a lot of stuff in the denial letter that has nothing to do with appropriateness. It has three things, Mr. Chambers. I said the first thing, it says your si, maximum sign, it should be only thirty-six by seventy-two. Let's be real, most of the signs you see in downtown Milliville, business signs on the front of buildings are way bigger than thirty-six inches by seventy-two inches. It talks about me, my sign was delivered in December. I must explain to you, I didn't want to go through this long story, that last year at this time, the, the, Lee Saw, the person that was renting the building, he, he wanted a sign on the back of the building. Since I deal in billboards, I have them up on North Columbus Street, I told him I would get a sign painter for him. Then I told him I go and deal with the sign painter, and I could get it at a lower price. So, I decided to do that, he was supposed to get, turn the artwork into the sign painter and apply for the uh, a, a certificate of appropriateness, okay? Uh, that was in October last year. The sign painter brought the sign in December, and I asked this fellow here who's running Doughboy's Pizza, he still hadn't gotten a certificate of appropriateness. The sign laid in my basement from December to July. Then the sign painter told me. Then the sign painter told me in July that if he didn't put it up while he was over here, then I would have to pay him or somebody else to put it up later. So I told him, "Put it up." He put it up on July the twenty-third. I had no idea that this sign would be, uh, class inappropriate. It is smaller than the other signs around. So he put the sign up that same day I went down to get application for certificate of appropriateness. That was the twenty-third of July. I turned it in two days, two days later. HPC, I've served on HPC for seven years. We never looked at what a person did or their criminal record, all this kind of stuff. We just only looked at and were supposed to look at the appropriateness of what's been presented before us. But they have done here. You, your sign was delivered to you in December, you failed to apply for a certificate of appropriateness even though you knew that you needed one. You placed a sign on your building without obtaining the certificate. Where the situation went and to save money, I had let the man put the sign up there. Okay? So, and I were hoping that it would be appropriate. Now, in your package, on page one, we've heard a lot about signage. And I, I want you to look at page one and you will see, well, let's try page two. Page two, please. Page two, in the second column, there, there you will find highlighted thirty-six inches by seventy-two inches. Thirty-six inches by seventy-two. Now, if you turn back to page one, you will find that that is a requirement for quick approval to Main Street. That is not a requirement for historic preservation. That is the second column. If you look at the third column on page one, those are the requirements for HPC. If you turn over to the next page, you won't see that small thirty-six by seventy-two on the HPC. HPC has taken a quick approval measurement and applied it, that's supposed to be with, uh, uh, the Main Street for quick approval of smaller signs, and applied it to me, denying me. There is no guideline that says from the city of Millersville that Main Street must adhere to thirty-six by seventy-two. Also, it has been said that I disregarded some guidelines. I didn't disregard any guidelines. I think Main, Historic Preservation Commission has disregarded my rights. They have misapplied this guideline, making me abide by if the Main Street director's gonna give somebody a quick approval, as long as the sign is kind of small, and they have applied it to me. A number of other things have happened that I am not pleased with, but I will not talk bad about anybody in this meeting or otherwise. It is just a sign on the back of the building. I'm trying to help this first-year business owner, first-time business owner, maintain his business. And we thought for sure that we are within the guidelines. Now, also it's said that I made several trips to Main Street. I didn't make several trips to Main Street trying to get an approval. When I did see Carly, I would ask her if the owner of Doughboys had got, had, 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 had gotten his, uh, uh, thing approved. And then finally, I went down and asked her, I said, "Well, why can't it get?" And she told me, "Okay, I can't do it. It's bigger than the thirty-six by seventy-two." I said, "Okay, alright." So at that point, it was fine with me, but when the sign painter came in, in July and said, "Either put it up now while he's over here, or I will have to pay later," I decided to let him go and put it up. Are there any questions for me?
Counsel.
So, Mr. Simmons, you're saying that you had already talked with Carly before you put the sign up and, and she, she was already aware of the size and had already told you that it was inappropriate before you put it up?
Well, your question is a little loaded, Ms. Shinholster. She is, she, she, she only approves signs, thirty, those smaller sized signs, thirty, what, what are they, thirty-six or thirty-two? Thirty-six by seventy-two. Yes, I talked to her about that. But when, uh, uh, so I knew I had to go to HPC. But, uh, uh, even by going to HPC, I saw no problem with that. Now, one other thing I want to mention, uh, it was called an other sign. You have it in your package. The name wasn't mentioned, you know, but we, I think, we might need to bring it out. I'm not gonna call the name of it. But it's, it's on page nine. It was called the other sign, but I think it needs, you need to know what, what, uh, the city, the city administrator said when she said the other sign. I think that's the one she meant. We called, we called out all the other signs, signs, but this one was called other, I didn't hear a name called for this one. I guess that's what the one is saying, the other sign. Page, on page nine, which is a ten by nineteen sign.
But that's painted on, right?
Yes, it's painted on.
Okay.
And there is no regulation that says you can't have a vinyl sign. Matter of fact, uh, uh, vinyl signs in many aspects are far more tasteful and appropriate than painted-on signs. We have a lot of problems with painted-on signs in the historic district. Once you paint a sign on a building, and many of the historic buildings, it makes you paint that building from then on because you can't sandblast it off. The bricks would be too old and you can't sandblast, so you have to just keep painting over that sign. So a vinyl sign would be even, would be even better.
Did you hang the sign before you went to get permission from anybody? Is that, is that not what I've heard?
Yes, ma'am.
You hung the sign, then you went and asked for permission?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay.
And, 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 uh, 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 I, 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 I know what you're saying, but there have been people who have torn down buildings in the historic district before going to the Historic Commission. There have been other people who've done other things, but under this circumstance...
Mr. Simmons, does that make your action right?
Yes, sir.
That other people, it does? Other people do things wrong, so it makes your action right? That, you're, you're contradicting yourself here now.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes, sir, Mr. Simmons.
If my wife was expecting and she was in labor and the speed limit was fifty-five and I went seventy-five and was stopped by a policeman, that's not legal, but my actions would be right. That's not legal, and I don't think a policeman...
I, I fail to, to find the, the crossover in your example. But I, I, I do question one thing, and, and that is that you served on this board.
Yes, sir.
And yet you ought to know that you certainly should have to get a certificate of appropriateness before hanging that sign. Mr. Simmons, you have had buildings for years downtown. You have been part of this, this historic district. You've been before this council on a couple of occasions. And I just, I, I have to question why you seem to be rambling because that, that seems to be what this is. I think it boils down to the simple point of, did you apply for a certificate of appropriateness before putting up this sign? And if not, when you did, it was denied because of the size of the sign. It is not about the rear. It is not about the front. It is in keeping with the entire historic district, whether it be a house, whether it be a business, an owner of a building, or in this case, you own the building and this sign is about a business that otherwise you have nothing to do with other than renting to the owner. Am I correct in this? And yet, and yet this business owner is not even here. Is it his sign or is it your sign?
It's my sign.
Okay, it's your sign for his business in your building.
Yes, sir.
And you still did not go through the proper channels to get this put in place. And maybe if you had, it might have been approved. I don't know. I, I got a feeling probably not because I have to agree that it does start to set a precedent. Uh, in nineteen ninety-one, ninety-two, I served as part of a committee that helped rewrite the guidelines for the Historic Preservation Commission. We updated some of the information in there. We looked at several different things as far as colors, so on and so forth. So I know the seriousness of which this board of which you've served on takes their business and makes sure that it is applied correctly and evenly throughout this historic district. I'm just, I'm having a hard time with the sympathy end of things, sir.
What is your question, Mr. Chambers? What is your, I mean, what do you, what do you...
I don't have a question. I am making a statement.
Okay, alright. Yes, sir. Okay, now...
The statement is, is that you are starting to kind of run around and, and you're, you're repeating some things and I think it's, it's gotten to a point, unless there are any other questions, that we need to get to, uh, the fact of trying to decide this situation.
Mr. Mayor.
I don't mean to push it on, but if you have any more questions, I certainly, uh, will step aside, otherwise I will...
I haven't, uh, insulted anybody else's judgments or their statements and I'm, 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 I won't right now. But I'm not rambling. It is in black and white what column, what law, what guideline HPC should go by. It's not in that second column, and I'm not rambling on that. I'm not rambling. It's in, it's not in that second column where the thirty-six inches is. Now, you all can do whatever you want to do. I'm gonna live with my decision and you and God will live with your decision. And that'll be all. That'll be fine. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
This has been the right thing. And I did have questions because I went walking to look at the different signs that are around. And the signs that I have questioned about, uh, Ms., uh, what, I can't even think. Ms. Graham, she clarified those and they are city signs, which I think that we need to look at ourselves also. I mean, if we say thirty-six by seventy, seventy-two, we need to go by that as a city also. But, um, you were in violation of doing some things that you shouldn't have done. And, um, I, I don't know what's going on with you and Main Screen, Main Street. But my thing is, is that you hung the sign before actually getting permission to do that.
Right. Now, you, I did, I did, and that is illegal, okay? But it, I, all I was asking for with what's going on in this situation, and I'm sorry I don't talk any better, Mr. Chambers, and, and I do, unfortunately, I was raised a...
No, you're, you're making light of what I'm saying, Mr. Simmons, and I, I am not saying that you're not talking...
I didn't mean to be making light of what you're saying and, uh, uh, I'm trying very hard to, uh, to, to, uh, be pleasing to everybody. But that doesn't matter, as long as I please God. That's what matters. To answer to your question is this. I didn't do anything. Th- this is no, no big deal to, to go, to, to, to go and give a property owner a three-hundred-and-eighteen-dollar fine just because he had to put the sign up. Let, let HPC look at it. And then for HPC to be so influenced, uh, uh, and, and to think that they must go by thirty-six by seventy-two. HPC is not to go by thirty-six by seventy-two, but they went by it with me. They went by it with me. And, and, uh, so, I mean, this, uh, I'm not rambling. I don't talk that bad. I'm not rambling. But a lot has been said against me here tonight, uh, on, on this, and, 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 and I'm going to answer those. I went, I, I've, I've been downtown owning businesses since nineteen eighty-five. My family has owned businesses for over the last hundred-and-twenty-five years in downtown Millersville. I'm a seventh-generation native of Millersville. So I'm just asking to be treated fairly. My sign is way more tasteful than many of the other signs. And, 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 and some of the signs, we just, we, we're saying they are city signs, but, uh, which one are, are city and which one are private development? Page nine, that sign, that's a city sign also? I'm sorry for asking a question. I know I'm about not supposed to do that, but, uh, I didn't know that was ran by a city agency, that, that particular entity. Or the city, uh, received funds from that. I, I wasn't aware of that. But if you call it, I don't know. But, Mr. Mayor, I've made my position and, uh, it's time for you all to make yours. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sure.
Another question. Cause you stated that, um, in during your time on historic preservation, that you all never had to deal with signs, but isn't...
Oh, we dealt with signs. We dealt with signs.
You, you all dealt with signs?
Yes, yeah, I was there when we, we wrote up a number of the sign, sign, guideline.
And they had to be removed, right?
Yeah.
So you do understand...
Wait a minute now, it had to be removed.
Well, you said you were there when they wrote up a number of signs.
I mean, we wrote up the guidelines for signs.
So then, then you understand that there are guidelines for signs under historic preservation, right?
Thirty-six by seventy-two is not one of them. It's not one of them.
Well, what are the guidelines for signs under historic preservation?
Whatever the historic preservation, that, that board deems necessary. The city would not put a definite number on how to do signs. At that time, when I was on the board, the city said, "Okay, HPC, you decide what's appropriate, what's not appropriate."
So...
And, excuse me, I want to add one other point. And at that time, we had one or two businesses that had, uh, uh, neon signs. And we didn't know any better, so we had those cities, those businesses to remove neon signs. After further education on, 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 uh, uh, environment, we went to University of Jordan and took classes on environmental design, then we learned that even a neon sign can be appropriate, but we, we, we made a mistake then. So we then started allowing neon signs to be appropriate if they were tasteful and in the right, you know, in the right manner.
But my point is, Mr. Simmons, as part of that board, governing board, you all made decisions as to whether or not signs had, signs could stay or be removed, right?
Yes, yes.
And, and, and people, um, had to respect that decision by HPC. Am I right or wrong?
Uh, they could, they could come before the his, uh, co, city council like you do, like, like I'm here tonight and ask for it. Yeah. And, but when I was on Historic Preservation Commission, we never denied a sign because it was bigger than thirty-six by seventy-two. That, that, that's not, that's not a guideline for HPC.
Anything else, counsel?
So this, this sign would be temporary or does somebody paint a permanent sign up or what?
Oh, it, 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 it's, you know, all vinyl signs are temporary. They, 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 they last about four years. Yeah, I, I saw it torn place, uh, they, they didn't want to put another screw to hold that little corner on it. But, but it, it's not continuing to tear. I've been watching it too.
Just went by today and saw it, so it was torn up in that little corner.
Yeah, it was difficult to put up there, so.
So you, you may remove yourself or you have a company coming?
Yeah, I had to get a company to come in and remove it. I could, you know, maybe, but, uh, I don't want to be going up on ladders and stuff. Yeah, it signs easily to be removed. It can be easily removed. I mean, I mean, a company with the right equip, equipment. It's not like a painted sign where you gotta try to sandblast something off.
Anything else, counsel? Mr. Simmons? Ms. Farrell, she's not saying anything.
I don't know the date of the information Mr. Simmons was referencing, but what we are going by is the design guidelines. Millersville Historic Preservation Commission, November two thousand and two. And it does address rear entrances, that they should be appropriate and signs should be within the same guidelines and scales. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any further comments or questions? That concludes the evidence on, uh, this hearing and I'll entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion that we uphold the findings of the Historic Preservation Commission.
I second the motion. I second the motion.
Have a motion and a second for a discussion. You can ask court to call the roll, please.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
This name?
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
That passes. Thank you, we uphold. Thank you. Move to Resolution zero-three-six. Ask clerk to read that in caption, please.
To authorize an agreement with Eric Gass Incorporated for the rental of a heating and tank used in the Main Street program.
I'll entertain the motion, counsel.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? You're gonna ask clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Thank you, that passes. Next, ask clerk to read Resolution zero-three-seven in caption, please.
To authorize an agreement with RDS Construction LLC to make roof repairs to the main lift station, the Fish and Creek Lift Station, the Camp Creek Lift Station, the Sledge Building, and the Water Treatment Plan.
I entertain a motion on that, counsel.
Make a motion, we approve. Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? You're gonna ask clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
That passes. Thank you. Next, ask clerk to read Resolution zero-three-eight in caption, please.
To cancel the November eleventh, two thousand and fourteen council meeting in observance of the Veterans Day holiday.
I'll entertain a motion, counsel.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? You're gonna ask clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Last, ask clerk to read Resolution zero-three-nine in caption, please.
A resolution of the Mayor and Alderman of the City of Millersville authorizing the city to enter into a revocable license agreement with State Properties Commission for the purpose of assessing Central State Hospital property to construct pedestrian accessibility improvements.
I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we approve. Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? You're gonna ask clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
That passes. Thank you. Counsel, I entertain a motion to move into executive session to discuss a real estate and legal matter.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? You're gonna ask clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Okay, that passes. Ladies and gentlemen, if you'll give us a moment to move into executive session, we return it. Call the meeting order, and ask clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Shinholster?
Here.
Mr. Mullins?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
We do have a quorum present. No action was taken in our executive session. There's no further business to come before counsel. I entertain a motion to adjourn. Yes, sir.
So moved.
I would like to make known by way of announcement that everyone is invited to this weekend's 11th Annual Deep Roots Festival in downtown Millersville, for all of our listeners at home. Please come on out and join us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other thing else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Our motion stands.
Have a motion and a second, any opposed? You're gonna, we are adjourned.